One.
Hi, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th, 2022 Multi-Board Meeting on Affordable Housing. This is a meeting among the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the ZBA. And I am Brandy Kinsman from the Select Board. Pursuant to the Governor's Order Regarding Remote Meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic, we are meeting tonight via Zoom, and we are being recorded, broadcast, and livestreamed by WACA tonight. So I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02, and then we will open up the meeting for the different boards. Joe, would you like to to open up the meeting for the Select Board?
Be happy to, Brandy. Roll call vote for the current Select Board members that are present.
Here, I.
Mitchell.
Reeves.
Kinsman, I.
And yeah, that's five zero. We are all present.
Tricia, do you want to call the Planning Board to order?
Sure, we don't usually have that same routine, but we will follow suit, calling to order at 7:02. In roll call order, I don't think Lakshmi is on, so we'll start with Deepa.
Deepa, my good day.
Anna Tazminitsky, I.
So what, I, sorry about that.
No problem, and Tricia Kendall, I.
Okay. Steve Greenberg, would you like to call the Affordable Housing Trust to order?
Sure, Steve Greenberg, I'll say here. I think Alan, could you say here?
Alan, go there, one go here.
Joe Mignani?
Here.
David Rosenblum?
Here.
Any other members of the trust here?
I'm here, Barbara.
Barbara, excellent, Barbara's here, okay. Bernadette, are you here? I think that's all for the trust, thank you.
Okay. And John, do you want to open the meeting for the ZBA?
I'd be glad to. I, John Trefeather, am present.
I, Brian Forreston, present.
I, Anton Karmavam.
And I believe that is all that we have tonight, but that is a core.
Great. So in addition to the four boards, we are joined by our town manager, Michael Herbert, our assistant town planner, Emma Snellings, and also with by Alex Koppelman and Alexis Smith from MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. They have been our partners in the Housing Production Plan and the Inclusionary Zoning Project, and they are both regional housing and land use planners with MAPC, and they are our resources, and thank you both for being here this evening, too. So thank you, everyone, for making the time to be here tonight. This is outside of all of our regular scheduled meetings. But, you know, affordable housing is a really complex issue, and all of our boards touch an aspect of affordable housing, whether it's the policymaking of the Select Board, the implementation of it, of the Affordable Housing Trust, or the permitting components of both the Planning Board and the ZBA. So I thought it would be helpful for all of us to take some time and be on the same page tonight, to understand the same kind of big-picture view, and be able to discuss and ask questions of one another, because I think that is really the value of tonight's meeting. And so, you know, we can kind of make a decision directionally where we want to go to address the very real need of affordable housing in Ashland. Just a few housekeeping things before we get things started. First, we've set aside the time from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. tonight for tonight's discussion, and I'm going to ask that we have a hard stop at 9:00 p.m., so I want to respect everyone's time, and everyone has given so much to be able to be here tonight. I do want to be able to open this up. I know we have some citizens here that I'm sure would love to be able to ask questions and comment. So I would like to have citizens be able to give comment at the end of the evening. That is assuming that we have time at the end. Also, we have a lot of folks here on the call tonight. There are four boards and lots of people. I would ask that if you do want to ask a question or have a comment, that you use the raise hand function within Zoom to ask a question. Otherwise, I ask that you put yourself on mute, please. And last but not least, we are going to be talking about the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw that we've been working on based on some of the feedback that we had at the Planning Board. And I know this is the first time the Select Board is really meeting to discuss this. And we are closing the town meeting warrant for May, Wednesday. I I'm making the recommendation that we pull the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw from the May meeting to be able to give everyone a thorough chance to be able to review and understand, ask questions about this Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, and feel comfortable with it. If we have to tweak it, we tweak it to be able to feel comfortable with putting it on the November Town Meeting Warrant. I just feel that it was never the Housing Production Plan's intention to make this feel rushed, and so I want to make sure that we are all comfortable with this before it moves on to town meeting. And I also just think that this meeting in particular will be much more productive, just kind of having that said upfront, so we're not looking to to basically solve every single issue around Inclusionary Zoning tonight. So we've prepared some slides for tonight, but this is really an informal conversation. The slides are really just to frame up the discussion. So as we go through them, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to to raise your hand, and we're gonna, you know, so it's definitely an interactive conversation. This isn't a formal presentation. So with that, Emma, you have, you're doing that, the slides, okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions before we before we start? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. So the Multi-Board Meeting on Affordable Housing, go ahead and go to the next slide, Emma. Okay, so where we first start is with data. And when we began the Housing Production Plan process, which was in the fall of 2020, MAPC began with a needs analysis. And some of the things that they looked at was really trying to solve question, do we really need affordable housing in Ashland? And so when we look at the housing home sale prices, and this is only through 2019, obviously, it doesn't reflect sort of the crazy home market that we find ourselves in for the last year or two. But just looking at this particular chart, we see where where we were when we first did the Housing Production Plan, which was in 2015 versus where where this ends in 2019. And we can see that just during those that period, that that home prices have been increasingly rap rapidly increasing, and it's a 27% increase in single-family and 45% increase in condo prices. So and obviously, it doesn't reflect recent home sales in Ashland. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. So when we look at housing affordability in Ashland, and we talk about who might qualify for deed-restricted affordable housing, we talk a lot about area median income, AMI. And AMI is, it's, we call it area mean income, median income, and it encompasses quite a bit of towns in the in the area, so it's not just Ashland. It's looking at other cities and towns in Middlesex County, like Cambridge, and Hoppington, and Lexington, and Waltham, and Holliston, and Framingham, and, you know, Belmont, and Burlington, and it kind of encompasses quite a bit. So for FY 2020, we look at the area median income at 119,000. When we look at affordable housing and what is considered eligible for for at an 80% AMI, you're looking at an individual household of 67,400 and a four-person household of $96,250. So sometimes people associate affordable housing with low income, and it's really, it's really not. I mean, there is definitely a need for low-income housing, but that is not what we're specifically talking about here. We're really talking about like our seniors and our workforce housing, teachers, police officers, firefighters, folks that 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 work in Ashland. We want to be able to make sure that they can afford to live in Ashland. So next slide. So when we took, we take another look at what the breakdown is and who would be eligible in the households. And this is 2015 data, so it is a little bit, a little bit older. But when we look at it, we we look at it, it's out of all of our households, 1,885 would be eligible to live in a deed-restricted affordable housing unit. And when we talk about affordable housing, we're also not just talking about apartments. I know sometimes it seems like we always talk about apartments, but it's it's also deed-restricted, single-family homes and condos, all of which we do have here in Ashland. Okay, next slide. And so when we break out the demographics into household income levels, you can see that the elderly households and the single or non-related households are really the two biggest categories of of need by household type. So you can see that that the break, what the breakout is, and then the range between extremely low and and upper, you know, and the upper income, it's really the elderly households and the single households that have the greatest, the greatest need. 58% of the elderly households are low-income, and 28% of single-person households are low-income. Next slide. Emma, do you want to go ahead and?
Yes. So as Brandy just said, obviously, there are segments of the Ashland population that could take advantage of affordable housing. But then we come to the issue of a gap between the needs for housing and the housing stock that exists. So between 1960 and 1990, on the state level, Massachusetts communities permitted almost 900,000 units. But since 1990, so the same amount of time, fewer than 470 units have been built. So this is leading to a shortage of housing statewide. This isn't just an Ashland problem. Massachusetts has among the highest and fastest-growing home prices, which puts financial pressure on those low- and middle-income families, like we just saw with the pie charts. And so the state sees the high cost of housing as a disadvantage as we compete with other states. And so they've created a few programs that play out on the local level, and Ashland is a part of a few of those programs. And I'll briefly go over two right now. So the first is housing choice communities. Ashland is a housing choice community. You gain certification by producing a certain percentage of housing stock, building a certain percentage of housing stock in a five-year time period. The benefit of becoming a housing choice community is you gain access to grant programs that can help you increase, help a community increase capacity and produce housing. So that is one example of the state trying to assist communities with increasing their housing stock. Who? Come on. There we go. The next one is, I'm sure everyone has heard of it, is the subsidized housing inventory. So that is a measurement of the community's stock of moderate-income housing. So this is basically the ratio between total housing stock and affordable housing stock in a community. Ashland's SHI is currently 9.1. However, once the 2020 census numbers are certified and accepted by the state or DHCD, Ashland's percentage will be about 7.9. This matters, because in municipalities less than 10%, developers can come in with projects and request waivers of the local zoning bylaws, and this is called a 40B or comprehensive permit. These permits are heard by the ZBA. And locally, some examples include Robert Hillway, the Ledges Development, Arbella at Ashland, which is the recent one permitted up on Memorial Drive. And so these come in, they do provide affordable housing. But at the same time, the local community doesn't get the benefit of their own zoning bylaws. Now, currently, Ashland is in safe harbor, so that means a developer cannot bring a 40B into town for permitting, because we certified our Housing Production Plan, which means we showed that we have produced a certain amount of housing within a year-long time period, and that allows us to be in safe harbor for two years. So the state has many programs to encourage affordable housing and housing in general. These are just two of them, and we'll talk about more later.
Does anybody have any questions? Are we, anybody have any comments, questions? Rob, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, just so the the statewide numbers you showed on housing production between for the 30-year period between 60 and 90, and then 90 and 2020, do you have that data for Ashland? Because I think that would be an interesting perspective for people to approach this.
I don't have that at hand, but I agree that that would be an interesting statistic, and I'd be happy to end that out after the meeting.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think that's something we should include as part of this process, because, you know, Ashland has a long history of building moderate housing and housing units in general. So I think it'd be helpful to have some specific information on that. And my other, my other question in terms of the safe harbor, and this is, you know, we have quite a few projects that are in the pipeline. And so when you are projecting these numbers based on the 2020 census in terms of the 7.9%, is there some effort to look at the existing apartments and their various levels of affordability and incorporate that into the into the projection?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So looking at what's in the pipeline now is is a part of, you know, discussions as we look to like when the community might hit 10%, yes. Again, I don't have that exact number right now, but yeah.
That in our projections as we as we move in this process. Thanks.
I can add a little bit to that if you'd like and answer some of Rob's questions.
Go ahead, Michael.
So a couple of things. So, Rob, when you're looking at Safe Harbor, it takes about 33 units of affordable housing to gain us half a percent on our inventory in about, that would equate to one year of Safe Harbor. So 66 units would give us an increase in one percentage point on our subsidized housing inventory and would result in two years of Safe Harbor. If you look at something like 100 Chestnut Street, which I believe is 176 units, we would be able to count 18 units, I believe, towards our affordable, our subsidized housing inventory, because I believe they're proposing 10%. That really wouldn't get us anything in terms of Safe Harbor. If you look at 501 Pond Street, I'm not necessarily sure where that is, but maybe the combination of those units would get us to 33 units, which would gain us a year's Safe Harbor, if that makes sense.
And, Michael, I know we've had a conversation about this, but since since we've entered Safe Harbor, has there been, has there there been potential developers that have asked to be able to do 40B projects since we've been in Safe Harbor?
Yeah, we've actually been in Safe in Safe Harbor twice. So the first was in 2017 after Sears Apartments came on, and we were able to count the 40 units towards our subsidized housing inventory, and that gave us a year. And then also with the second time was with UGC, once that was permitted, and we were able to count all 180 units towards our subsidized housing inventory, because it was a 40B project in 20, it was a friendly 40B, and 25% of that was affordable. The first time when we were in Safe Harbor, we were approached by Bob Gaynor, had brought in a developer who was looking at doing a 500-unit development right off of Cherry Street. It was in the RTD, RTD Lot 3, which is what we now own. But he was looking at doing a 500-unit development off of Cherry Street. And once he realized we didn't have the appetite to to take on something like that, he threatened to go the 40B route. But as I said before, we were in Safe Harbor, so we were able to successfully stave that way. The second time was recently, actually, as recently as the fall of 2021. A group called Continental Properties was looking at doing a 260-unit development across from the high school, the 15 acres across from the high school, which is a completely wooded area as well. Again, we let them know that we really didn't have the appetite for a development like that. And of course, they do want to go the 40B route. So we were able to make the fact that we were in Safe Harbor, and again, stave away another 40B development.
Okay, thanks. Julie, I do see your hand, but we're going to wait, we're going to wait to the end of the meeting to do public comment. We're going to, so we'll have, we'll have some public comment at the end, end of the end of the discussion tonight. Steve, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
No, Steve Mitchell. So, Michael, can you explain how the the percentage is calculated? You know, realizing that we started with 9.1% at prior to the release of the 2020 census, and now we've reduced to 7.9%. But does it get reset on an annual basis? You know, how is that percentage managed, you know, year by year?
So that percentage is based on the decennial census. So we most recently had the 2020 census numbers certified, and so that's why you see that drop in that percentage. You combine the number of units, the total housing units that we've added over that 10-year period, and you look at what we've gained in terms of affordable housing during that same period, that's, it's actually declined. So that's why you see that reduction.
Well, I get the math on the increase in population, but are you saying that if, let's, let's just for an example, we hit 10% at some point this year, that 10% holds for the for the next 10 years until the next census?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Deepa, go ahead. I see you have your hand raised. Go ahead. You need to unmute yourself.
We should figure this out after two years of COVID. Michael, so when that Safe Harbor is counted on the percentage of projects that are permitted or constructed?
It it's based on, if you're doing a comprehensive permit, it's based on when the comprehensive permit is issued. And if it has not been constructed within a year after that comprehensive permit is issued, that Safe Harbor, those units are then rescinded and taken back off the subsidized housing inventory. And then they can only be added back on through an occupancy permit being issued.
And number changes every year because the population increases? So that's the, that's the reason why we come out of Safe Harbor?
No, we would come out of Safe Harbor. Well, there's a couple of ways. One is, once the decent, so the decennial census measures not only population growth or decrease, it also measures housing units. So when I talk about the census, it's not necessarily referring to the census counts of people. It's referring to the census counts of housing units. And so we can come out of Safe Harbor if, when it's recalculated every 10 years, we fall below the 10% number. The other way we can come out of Safe Harbor is if we go, so again, Safe Harbor can either be in one- or two-year increments. If we come out of that one- or two-year increment that where we are on Safe Harbor, and we have not built the requisite number of affordable units to maintain Safe Harbor, then we come out of that.
Thank you.
And probably the best way to illustrate this would be Sears. Sears is almost 400 units. It was 10% affordable. 40 units came on the subsidized housing inventory. So when that was issued, the permits were issued in 2016, and it was being constructed through 2017. When those 40 units came online, we were able to count those immediately towards our subsidized housing inventory. But the 400 units weren't counted until, 400 total units weren't counted into the next census. So we actually were able to achieve Safe Harbor status for a year, because, again, we had, we were able to add those 40 units on right away, and we had a certified housing production plan. So because we had both of those, we were able to gain Safe Harbor in a year. For, excuse me, for a year. Within that year, we did not construct any, any affordable housing that equalled 33 units. So we weren't able to gain another year's Safe Harbor, and so we came out of that for a while.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's go to the next slide. I'm going to turn this over to Steve Greenberg, who's going to take us through the Affordable Housing Trust slides.
Thank you, Brandy. The first slide is a list of the members. All Ashland residents, all terrific people to work with and folks I'm very proud of. So if we go to the next slide, please. This is the stated purpose of the trust. And, you know, the the purpose of the trust is to preserve and create affordable housing in the town. It's for the benefit of low- and moderate-income households. And that's our purpose. That's what, that's what we try and achieve. Maybe if everybody wants to read it, but I think, I think we're ready for the, for the next slide, which talks about some of the accomplishments of the trust. So since, since the trust was started and funded, we've completed 22 transactions that involve purchase and resale of deed-restricted units, the majority of which have been in the condo development off of Chestnut Street, America's Boulevard, John Hancock, those streets. And we've done some single families on Raymond Marquetti. So all in, all in all, there's been 22 transactions over the years. In 2011, the trust invested in some due diligence for 133 West Union. We did some appraisals, some inspections of the barn, and spent some money on legal fees. Back in 2013, the trust purchased 6 Cherry Street with the intent of developing that corner and heading towards Town Hall as as some affordable housing. And that's still not in the back of our minds, it's in the front of our minds. But obviously, we have a corner spot there, and that's a nice asset to the town. But at some point, we'd like to see some affordable housing developed there. Back in 2015, the trust contributed 20,000 towards the comprehensive plan. Next slide. And then in 2020, the trust again committed to a $20,000 contribution for the Housing Production Plan and the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, obviously, what we're discussing this evening. Another accomplishment, we, a number of years ago, created the Down Payment Assistance Program. That's worked pretty well. And to help with rental assistance, early on in COVID, the trust committed $250,000 towards rental assistance. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Emma Snelling of the Planning Department, who pretty much ran that program for her, for us, and reported terrific information to us. And thanks to Emma's efforts and members of the trust, I think we were able to help. And thanks to Emma's efforts and members of the trust, I think we were able to help a number of families. So. Eighty thousand dollars distributed to date. We also have committed up to two hundred thousand dollars subject to occupancy permits at twelve Pond Street. To obtain the deed restriction on four affordable units in perpetuity at that, at that location. Next slide. So this goes back to the original funding, which was at Fall Town Meeting in two thousand and seven. Trust received from Town Meeting five hundred thousand dollars. Through the Community Preservation Act Committee to the trust. And. A majority of those funds were spent in the acquisition and resale of the twenty-two units we, twenty-two transactions we talked about earlier. And. Each time we. Purchase. A unit, it's about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar transaction. So. We went back to town meeting in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. And requested and were successful in getting four hundred and fifty thousand from the Community Preservation Act. And that money is in the trust, and I think the next slide will show some balances. Yeah, so that's the money we have on hand. And some of that is committed, but. That's where we're at right now. And I think there's a couple more slides. So some ideas the trust has been talking about that we wanted to suggest this evening. To offer some grants for deed restricted units of affordable housing. For developed or repurposed property that will provide affordable housing. So twelve Pond Streets, an example of that. Again, we, we paid. We paid some funds to get deed restrictions in perpetuity on four units. Once that project is. Finally, fully permitted and occupied. Next slide. So. There's a lot of talk about this all across the country, accessory dwelling units, ADU. My daughter's in California and Los Angeles and. She has a detached garage and. She's gonna move her in-laws from Las Vegas to their detached garage. And I'd like to say California sort of leads the way in many things and ADUs is, is right up there. But this is. Another potential bylaw that would offer a unique opportunity for Ashland to increase its affordable housing stock. Without having to fund any kinds of acquisitions or purchase expensive land and develop it. So hopeful if we can get, get rolling on something like this, we can create incentives that. Streamline the process, not only in construction and permitting, but get these things constructed. So the ADUs allow for extended families to be near one another, and they also get to maintain their privacy. ADUs can provide as much living space as many new built apartments or condominiums. And suited well for couples, small families, friends, young people and seniors. So an ADU gives a homeowner flexibility to share independent living areas with family members, others. And allows seniors to age in place as they require more care and get close attention from their, from their family. Next slide. We, we currently have a down payment assistance program I mentioned earlier on a purchase, but. On deed restricted units. But we'd like to. We plan to discuss as, as a group. That being the trust to help folks with deed restricted rental units with their down payments. Know the, the cost for a one bedroom. For an affordable unit to rent could be sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars. And if you have to come up with first last and. Security, you know, you're talking five, six thousand dollars and back in the day, that would be your twenty percent deposit on a house. So we'd like to see if we can help folks with that. And one more slide too.
You just before, before you move on, I know I see Tricia has her hand up. I don't know if, Tricia, you wanna unmute yourself?
Yes, Steve, I just had a quick question about the ADUs, because right now Ashland does. Allow ADUs, you need to go through zoning board of appeals, and I think it's really focused on. A related family member, but when you're talking about ADUs, are you talking about maybe extending that to? Non-related people or to, to make that a little bit more. Generous or why that, that allowance? What, what were you thinking there?
Well, I, I think with any potential bylaw, Trish, we, we start as broad. As possible and we get the input from the community and, and boards like the planning board and the zoning board and. Select Board and others to see what might work best for the town, but. I think initially we try and encompasses many potential new affordable. Units. I mean, I, I think the trust, you know, we talked about the purpose, but all in all, it's. Our goal is to create and maintain affordable housing. And if, if ADUs helps with that. Then again, I, I, I think we start with as broad, a broad proposal as possible and narrow it down as we go.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have any, any questions? I think that's the last slide for, for Steve on the Affordable Housing Trust. I just wanna see if anyone has questions. Rob, go ahead.
Just a quick question on ADUs. So do they get? Is there a process for counting them as part of this? The SHI index, is that an issue or how is that determined?
I don't know the exact answer to that. Maybe the folks in the planning department do. And if you don't mind, Rob, before I get to the answer to that question, or if Emma has the answer to that question. I just want to mention another statistic that I picked up today. Robert Hill Way, which is an over sixty-two affordable development off of Independence. It's just about a year old. There are, again, sixty-four units. I spoke to the management company today. And they're at thirty percent, fifty percent and sixty percent of AMI. And they have a waiting list in each three, each of those three categories. And there were, there are forty people on the waiting list for the thirty percent AMI. Twenty people on the fifty percent and twenty people on the sixty percent. So that's eighty people waiting for a unit and sixty-four unit development. But Emma, do you have an answer to Rob's question?
I can confirm that they wouldn't be counted as affordable units because they're not. Set up as rental units because it is limited to family. Whether it counts on the census as a housing unit, I would have to look into.
I wonder if we have Alex Koppelman from M A C Z on. Alex might. I know that we had talked a lot in, in the Housing Production Plan Committee about ADUs. Do you have, do you have a sense of like how, how other communities have handled? Have handled this and if, if, how it would count towards, towards SHI?
Yes, so first I just note that in our. Community engagement processes and through the data that we pulled apart as a part of the housing production planning process. Drafting a, an accessory dwelling unit by law rose to the top as one of the priority recommendations in the housing production plan. And the idea is to make the regulations more flexible so they can serve more people and. Likely go beyond just a related family members that it would be something that could be a possible rental option for someone. Could also help homeowners reduce their cost burden, being able to rent out. An accessory dwelling unit, but we really view accessory dwelling units as that lower they say naturally during affordable housing. Because it doesn't have a deed restriction. It's not required to be affordable typically. So it does help the situation, but since it's not a deed restricted affordable unit, it wouldn't be counted on the SHI. We have done a little bit of research through our Living Little Initiative about the possibilities of de restricting units like these, but. I'll let Alexis comment further on that. My understanding is it's, it's pretty difficult to get de restricted. Accessory dwelling units, but I don't know if you have more on that, Alexis.
No, I, without getting into the weeds, it is, it's pretty, it's, it's difficult to, to put a deed restriction, which is essential, as Alex said. It means that you legally cannot charge more than a certain amount for, for that housing unit. And when you're talking about, to, you know, to use the Steve's previous example, someone, you know, building a unit above their garage, you know, for whatever. That's, that's difficult to put a legal, legal deed restriction on, but it does help. You know, offer some options that are probably more affordable than a lot of the single family houses in town.
Thank you both Alexis and Alex. That's super helpful. I, I have a question for, for Steve. As far as the, the funding mechanisms for the Affordable Housing Trust, it's, it. It looks like, you know, the main funding mechanisms came from, from CPA funds and town meeting. What has, has the trust? I know there's still CPA funds in sort of the affordable housing bucket. That could be, could be leveraged. Does the trust sort of have a? A plan to, to either like go to CP, go to CPC and, and, and try to get. More funds for some of the programs that you're using, or are you kind of waiting to see what? What opportunities kind of present themselves before, before moving towards the funding?
Thank you, Brandy. Two, two answers to that. We did have a Warren article a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half ago. To request from the Community Preservation Act Committee. I think it was around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and use that as an incentive, like an RFP. To come up with a specific geographic, whether it be downtown or, or some other area in Ashland. Where if a developer brought a, a project forward. We'd be able to have funds readily available to contribute towards. The construction of additional affordable deed restricted units. And there's, there's. There is that potential and there's a substantial amount of money in. Community Preservation Act Committee set aside for affordable as well as in the general account. So that we're sort of waiting to see if there's some other substantial project that might warrant. A request for those funds.
Okay, thank you. One other question as well. So, you know, we, as we've gone through this process of. The Housing Production Plan and especially with inclusionary zoning. One of the things that we've heard from the public is that they want to make sure that we have. That we offer deeper affordability in some of our. In some of the projects and, and, and the. Not just include the eighty percent AMI, but go deeper. Just thinking that through with the trust ever or I know it's sort of this hypothetical situation. But would the trust consider buying some of that deeper affordability? I know that the trust has bought. The, the actual units, but could it be an option to do deeper affordability as well?
Yeah, I, I think that that was the intent of that Warren article that did not go forward was to. Have a pool of funds that we could buy down units in any potential development, but. I think. I think that, you know, the trust has close to half a million dollars. Sometimes that money gets tied up in the, in the per, purchase and then the resale of a property, but. I think we can get some things done with the funds that we have and. I, I'd like to go back to town meeting in the near future if it's something that trust is of a mind to do. And request a substantial, say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put exactly towards what you're talking about. Buying down the affordability. You know, you have to, you have to give to get.
Yep. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thanks for the question.
Yep. Does anyone else have any questions before we move on? Okay. And so just to give kind of a, a, a little bit of an overview of, of what the select board. Our perspective has been and, you know, my fellow select board members, please feel free to, to add to this because. I'm keeping this pretty high level, but. So, you know, when we talk about. Affordability and where, where we can, the select board tries to negotiate. Twenty-five percent affordable housing to make progress towards our SHI. So the way. We didn't, we didn't, haven't really talked about it yet, but one of the things that does happen is when. An apartment project has twenty-five percent affordable housing. DHCD allows us to, to count a hundred percent of those units towards our SHI. And so. As a select board, we have been. We have been able to negotiate, for instance, we were talking about the, the UGC senior development. That's been permitted, the forty B that's been permitted off of Memorial Drive. We were able to negotiate twenty-five percent affordable with UGC and not only were we. Able to negotiate twenty-five percent affordable, but also offer some deeper affordability. As a mix of both eighty percent AMI and sixty percent AMI. So. It's kind of an example, we, we had, we had a development agreement because there was. A portion of the property, the land that was deeded to come back to the town, so we were able to negotiate that. The select board has been in support of projects like the ledges. Steve was talking about that, the Robert Hill Way. Sixty-four units and that is really considered. It's, it, that is actually considered low income housing because it does have thirty, fifty and sixty percent AMI. And we do have. We, like Steve said, there's, there's definitely a need for both senior housing and for low income housing as well. And I also just wanted to, to, to. Throw out there for discussion, the potential use of some of our town properties. Specifically, the Simpson property, which is off of Olive Street. And the second lot of Robert Hill Way, which was turned back over to the town. As potential ways that we can. Maybe build very intentional, maybe small, but affordable housing. Projects in conjunction with the, with the trust and with the developer that maybe would be willing to. To work with us because it is town property and we could. We could help with the costs of the actual, of the actual land. So, you know, this is something that, that had come, we'll talk about it a little bit more in our. When we talk about the housing production plan, but this was something that. You know, I think is worth, worth pursuing. I know. I believe that the Affordable Housing Trust had been in conversations with Habitat for Humanity a while back. And, you know, maybe something along those lines. I'm just offering this up to the group for a discussion point. If it's something that. We think might be valuable for us to pursue. So I'll stop there and, and Joe's raising his hand. So go ahead, Joe.
Thanks, Brandy. With respect to Habitat for Humanity, I have been in contact with Hank Rausch. Who is the area representative. For Habitat in this area. And they are very willing and readily available to join us in the cause to develop. Specific areas in town that we had previously discussed. One of them was the Olive Street area. Realizing that the, the property off of Oak Street, off the Robert Hill Way. Was deeded back to the town. That's another potential viable location to do those types of projects. And probably at our next Affordable Housing Trust meeting, we can raise that concern and, and potential idea. And get that started sooner than later.
Thanks, Joe. Rob, go, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, thanks, Brandy. I just wanna, yeah, we have talked about, of course, just to review the town properties, which I think is important. The Simpson property was specifically purchased by Town Meeting, something like twelve years ago for a combination of. Affordable housing and I think open space or general. So I would certainly, you know, if we're gonna have that discussion, that's great. I, I think the sooner that the Affordable Housing Trust gets moving on that, the better. The Robert Hill Way, I think there's been a lot of issues there. I personally would have great reservations about going back there. For reasons we've discussed on many occasions, but I think especially picking. properties that we haven't reviewed through a comprehensive planner or in light of the open space plan, for example. So I wouldn't, you know, that's just my take on Robert Hill Way. We've gone through years of issues there. And we've done some affordable housing there. I think we should be looking in other places, but that's my take on those two suggestions. I think the Simpson is basically overdue and we should get moving on it.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Oh, David, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Hi. Now, as Joe said about, I'm gonna say, we Habitat came and talked to us. They're an amazing organization. And they can, they can get into the 30% affordability. They, and, you know, sweat equity is one of their things, getting the people to come in there and bone tears. You know, get, get, get our hammers out and help out. And and I think the Simpson property is something that we should be concentrating on. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, let's go ahead and move to the next slide. So talking a little bit about our Housing Production Plan and the process that we went through, just to let folks know. So the Housing Production Plan Committee started in the fall 2020. And I was joined by Tricia Kendall, the Planning Board, and David Rosenblum and Steve Greenberg of the Affordable Housing Trust, and Ron Escovitz from the Board of Health, and we worked with Peter Metrick and Emma Snellings in the Planning Department as well as MAPC. And so Alex Koppelman has been our partner in this since the very beginning. This has been an update to our 2015 Housing Production Plan. And we went through a set of recommendations for housing goals and strategies for five years. And it was adopted by the Planning Board and the Select Board last spring and sent to the state last, last year, and it gives Ashland Safe Harbor until 2023. As part of that, we identified five goals and nine priorities. I do want to be kind of clear on something that, you know, when we talk about housing production and we talk about our goals and priorities, you know, none of us are advocating for, you know, quote, more development in Ashland. We're really advocating for creating a plan and putting it in place to make constant progress towards our shared housing inventory, our subsidized housing inventory. Because, you know, we feel as, as the Housing Production Plan Committee, as well as me personally on the Select Board, I feel very personally that the more, the more we can control what the development is in Ashland, the better, the better it will be for our community. I just wanted to share, before we get into the goals and priorities, I did want to share just a a discussion I had had with someone who was on the Milton Planning Board. And, you know, Milton is a, is a community that's bigger than Ashland, but really not super big. I think it's about 28,000 people. And we were talking about housing and development in general. And she had said to me that Milton did not do a very good job of planning for for its affordable housing and and at the time, they were, the community was dealing with six 40Bs at the same time. So you know, I know that we, we talk about, we talk about 40Bs as sort of this nebulous potential issue. But what it really could turn into is larger projects than we want in areas that we want to keep as open space. So just making sure that we're clear that we are not necessarily advocating for more development. We are advocating for better planning. So. So moving into the next slide, we'll talk about the five goals that we had, we had settled on. In this process, when we went through this process, we had two public forums. We had lots of input from the public. And so we the five goals that that we had updated for the 2021 Housing Production Plan was to provide and preserve housing for all ages and incomes, adopt inclusive zoning that facilitates development of diverse housing, affirmatively further fair housing to promote equal housing opportunities, promote sustainability because we know that that is important as well, and build community awareness and support to address the issues around affordable housing. Next slide. So when we match up these five, five goals, we, we had, we identified nine priority policy strategies. I'm not going to go into a ton of information on these, but the first one that we identified was inclusionary housing to adopt a bylaw that would require a percent of affordable housing for all new development. The local initiative program, the LIP, which has been used in the past as part of the comprehensive permitting process. Three is a smart growth overlay, which when we talk about like things that the state has been adopting, one of the new regulations is 40R. It may sound slightly familiar to some of you because there was discussion at one point about the mill building project, whether or not the developer was going to pursue a 40R. He did not, so we are not going, going forward with a 40R. But it does provide, it's a, it's a process that would provide development in specific areas like a downtown. And it would be sort of an expedited process. Number four is form-based code to build on existing form-based code. Five, update our ADU bylaw. Next slide. Six is to provide emergency assistance. We talked about the, the program that the Affordable Housing Trust had developed during COVID and this is creating more of a permanent local emergency rental and mortgage assistance program. This is also separate from the the Ashland Emergency Fund, which you guys might be familiar with as well, which provides more broad-based assistance to residents who need it, need it in an emergency. Seven is town-owned land, so you basically utilize town property for affordable housing. Eight is generate resident awareness. And nine is housing development opportunities and potentially identify parcels to purchase to use for, for housing. Me personally, I rather, would rather start with the parcels that we currently own. But these are the nine priority strategies that we identified in the Housing Production Plan. If, I think it's important for us to all, you know, sort of review these and also decide which ones are our priorities because a housing production plan is a, is a document that, that is certified by the state, but in my mind, it's sort of a living, breathing document and a roadmap for us for the next five years. So I think that identifying specific priorities within this list that we want to focus on is definitely, is definitely important to me. Does anyone have any questions before, before we move, move on? Okay. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide, please, Emma. Okay, so we're going to start talking about inclusionary housing. If, if Alex or Alexis, if I, if I misspeak at all, or if I'm missing anything, or if any of my Housing Production Plan Committee members realize I'm missing something, please, please speak up. So going through basically what inclusionary housing is, it requires a percent of units in new housing to be eligible for, for affordable housing, for income-eligible households. And that is across the board. So it is not specific to apartments, even though sometimes we think of things as only apartments, but it's also single-family homes and condos, as well as, as rental units. Over 100 communities and cities in Massachusetts have, have passed inclusionary housing as part of one of their bylaws. It relies on private developers to create affordable housing. So when we talk about no public subsidy, this this is basically with, with no with no money from the Affordable Housing Trust. But we must carefully balance elements of the policy to, to minimize the cost because otherwise projects really won't happen. So right now in Ashland, we do not have an inclusionary housing bylaw. We only have overlay districts where there is requirements for affordable housing, but there is no town-wide policy that requires developers to, to include affordable housing in, in their projects. Next slide. So when we look at a project cost, you know, the majority of a project, and this is just a standard, any standard project, the majority of it is in construction. There are some other some other costs, including land acquisition and financing, but the majority of the costs in a project are actually construction. Next slide. So when you add affordability to a project, if it was 100% market rate, a developer would have a projected income amount that they would be targeting when you add affordability to that and some of those some of those units become affordable, less income obviously is produced from those particular units. So the project income decreases. Next slide. So if the costs of the project become greater than the income, basically a project will not happen. And this is where incentives come into play. Next slide. So incentives are generally offsets to basically help either, one of two things, either increase the income or reduce the project costs. If you are increasing the project income, the, the options are really generally a density bonus. So adding more units that are at a rate which will balance out the the affordable units or and, and, and also the deeper affordability to subsidize deeper affordability. On the reduction on the project costs, some options that are pretty useful are parking reductions or fee waivers or tax benefits. Next slide. So the way the incentives work is basically you have your project and the, and the the projected income from the market rate apartments, or I'm going to use this as an apartment scenario, you have the income from the affordable rents, and then you have the income from the incentives. So whether it's density, whether it's a parking reduction or fee waivers. So basically the, the project income balances out with, with what was expected from an initial, the initial project that the developer had, had wanted to do. Next slide. Okay, so now we're going to get into sort of the meat of the proposed inclusionary housing bylaw. I know Emma had sent out the, the document to you all. I'm sure that you spent lots of time reading it this afternoon, but we're going to go through the, basically the, the main points of, of the inclusionary bylaw. I did want to talk a little bit about the process that we went through. So as I stated, we, we finished our Housing Production Plan last spring. And in the fall, we started working with MAPC on this inclusionary housing bylaw. We had a public forum where we received some public input about how we can basically craft a bylaw that Ashland would would accept. You know, it's a lot of education about what inclusionary zoning is and what it isn't. And so the committee had put together several options. And the, we took those three options, the, basically there, there was one option that offered maximum units of affordable housing at, say, an 80% AMI. There was an option that offered deeper affordability, so less units, but at 60% AMI. And then there was a third option that was basically a hybrid that offered both. So both 60% AMI and 80% AMI. And both of those did have some trade-offs. The incentives that we were just talking about. So we took those three options and we put that back out to the public in a survey. And the overwhelming feedback from both the public and the and the committee was that we felt that the hybrid option was, was the best. We felt that in the public, this was, this was the public's feedback, that offering the deeper affordability was really important. So. So going into the actual bylaw itself, so this applies to any subdivision or development involving six or more dwelling units. So across the board, whether it's single-family homes or condos or apartments. For projects that are between six and 19 units in size, 12% of the units must be affordable housing. For projects 20 units or greater, 15% must be affordable housing. When we talk about these as multifamily housing units, like I said, we, we felt very strongly about the 60% AMI. So half of the units would be affordable at 60% AMI and half at 80% AMI. For single-family projects, they're all affordable units at 80% AMI. Next slide. So then when we talk about the incentives, what the, what the trade-offs would be, that the additional units, there's, there's a density bonus. So the total number of units shall be increased by the total, by the number equal to the affordable housing units provided on site. So for an example, if, if a development allowed 18 units, two units would be provided onsite for affordable housing. That's that 12%. The total number of units would equal 20. So that is how, how that density bonus would work. And in addition to the, the density bonus, there's also a parking reduction that the applicant could be permitted to reduce the parking by 25%, which was in the bylaw. The committee has actually recommended changing that to 10% with a special permit by the Planning Board to allow further reduction of up to 15%. In conversations that we had a week or so ago, we, we felt that a 25% reduction was extreme. And so we wanted to make sure that that the, that we thought the 10% was, was much more reasonable. So we had, we had planned to do to do that. So, you know, you know, at the Planning Board meeting on Thursday night, there was feedback that, you know, we don't want to give too much to a developer. So, you know, which I completely understand. I know that we've all had a bit of apartment fatigue in Ashland. There's been a lot of development, some of which is, is sort of what's happening on the state that Emma talked about, some of which is happening specific in Ashland, partially because of Mr. Fafford's estate, pretty much fire sale-ing their properties. You know, and I don't have a crystal ball as to what what may or may not be coming down the pipe for Ashland. And, you know, and I understand we don't want to to incentivize developers to create more development in Ashland, and I completely understand that. I do feel very strongly that if we do, if we, if we provide, if we put, if we provide if, if our, if our requirements are too strong and we are not able to have any housing built in Ashland, the downside is, is if we come out of 40 the downside is is if we come out of 40, if we come out of the safe harbor in August of 2023, and we have not added to our affordable housing stock, we absolutely will be subject to 40B development. And again, that will happen in a place that we can't control. So I would say that I would say that we need to make sure that we balance and that we make sure that whatever we create, as far as this bylaw is concerned, that that we have a have an eye to making sure that we can control control development in Ashland. Next slide. Okay, so in addition to the onsite, to the onsite affordable housing, we also added some additional flexibility to be able to do off-site construction that this would be a very specific situation. Personally, I don't think that this would happen very often, but that the planning board in consultation with the trust would be able to issue a special permit to satisfy construction at another site in Ashland. The applicant must have control over both sites, meet site plan review standards and have an architect's conceptual site plan with with unit designs and an agreement that those off-site units will comply with the bylaw. And the location must be approved by the planning board as a part of the review and approval process. So this is something that is offering additional flexibility because we thought that that might be something that could be useful, but we don't see it necessarily playing out pretty strongly in Ashland. Next slide. And the third option is a payment in lieu that projects up to 15 units in size. Again, the 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 committee recommends changing this to 13. Have the option to satisfy the requirements by making a cash payment in lieu of onsite affordable units to the Ashland Affordable Housing Trust. Obviously, creating onsite units is our goal, and that's our primary focus of this this bylaw, but we do realize that there may be circumstances where a smaller project that the developer either financially or is unable to accommodate additional units. So if they would like to, if they would that, you know, the the planning board allows for projects greater than 15, even in extraordinary circumstances, the planning board can grant a special permit to allow that cash payment in lieu. Like I said, it's 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 only in rare circumstances that some that a project greater than 13 would have the ability to do an in lieu payment. And that payment for each affordable unit is based on construction cost per unit divided, determined by the construction cost on the project's building permit application. And so, you know, this is like I said, we are, we are focused on creating creating onsite affordable housing and the payment in lieu is really, you know, it 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 should be only for for smaller projects that could not accommodate an extra, an extra unit. And then those those that money would go to the Affordable Housing Trust, which would then turn around into additional affordable housing opportunities for Ashland. Next slide. So other bylaw components, the affordable units must be evenly dispersed throughout the development. They're not supposed to be in one section. The exterior design is indistinguishable from market rate units. The interior design, same floor area as market rate units within a 20% margin. Bedroom mix proportionate to bedroom mix and market rate. Affordable units have to have the same mechanical systems and energy efficient features. And the interior features must be comparable to market rate, although they can make the decision to not include the higher end finishes, fixtures and appliances. And they must also have a preservation that these are subject to a housing restriction that is in perpetuity, that contains limitations on use and occupancy, rents and resale to preserve the long-term affordability of the units. So I am going to stop there and see, Mark, I see your hand, but we're going to, we're going to wait till the end to take questions from from the public. Okay? Marcelo, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you, Brandy. I'm relatively new to to the to the board, fairly new. And I'm trying to digest all this information that has been developed for a lot for quite a long time by by all the people that have been involved in this and in the studies. And I applaud everybody that has been involved because, as you said, Brandy, it's a very complicated subject and definitely a subject that has, you know, concluded on this proposed bylaw. And and just through your presentation, we see how difficult it is to get there. So I I'm just going to make a couple of thoughts that have been that I have been thinking since we discussed this on Thursday, which started this conversation in my in my head. And what I see on these on these presentations, it has kind of a common thread and a common conclusion that that I'm kind of arriving at. So just overall, I I I see the importance of of keeping out the tunnel vision and I and I understand the importance of all this work and get the affordable housing is very important to stay on course. But but there there are dangers of of seeing a tunnel vision and and not seeing the big picture. As an example, like there there is obviously an unintended benefit, thinking of firefighters or teachers. But the reality is that we're part of a much larger community and and just just losing the fact that only good planning would get us to oh, to 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 get the affordable housing that that we really want. We see how staying in safe harbor is very important because I agree with what you said, Brandy. Getting a bunch of 40Bs would just simply remove the ability for us to control what happens in in our community. And and that that's important, but also staying on real, real safe harbor, like Michael explained. Not not just safe harbor that that may maybe completely moved away once you count all the units at the end of the census, but but stay stay within within real numbers of of what that 10% means and see the community as 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 working together. I I I don't like when 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 we talk at times about the developers almost being like the the enemy of people see it as these these raiders. That would only happen if the planning is is poor, and that that's where I think the danger lies. Last example I have is the ADUs. And and I see, I have family in California. And and I and the what my vision is that the the ADUs are thriving there because it's very lazy planning. They're so restrictive that 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 now they're they're moving on to that that way of solving a problem that that has been created almost by 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 policy. And and one unintended consequence consequence of that is it just really the destruction of the urban fabric. And I don't think that's that's that that is a a solution for for planning. Overall, all this thread to me, and I know in the planning board, we've been talking about this. There is no solution better than having a comprehensive plan, and I know that's going to take some time. So we cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. But I think that we we I I urge everybody to to stay mindful of the of the big picture that if we plan the the our community properly and a zoning allows for developments that naturally belong in a certain place as opposed to spreading just a solution throughout the town, I think it's it's an important element to take into consideration.
Thank you, Marcelo. Rob, I see your hand up.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Yeah, I'll be brief. Yeah, I actually just have some questions about this. I think I've made my position clear about my reservations about this applying to the entire town. And all the land in the town. I think overall, it has, you know, a lot of positive aspects to it. So my question is, you said that there were 100 100 cities, towns that adopted inclusionary zoning in Massachusetts. Have all of them had it applied to the entire city or town? Have any of them used this approach in certain overlay districts as, you know, to get to Marcelo's point about planning, you know, so has that happened? And what are those kind of models and how have they worked? So that's that's my question with this one. Because we had, in just to go back to housing production plan, that listed a number of areas and parcels that were seen to be suitable for housing development, but we seem to have just lost all that and just have a shotgun approach here now.
So Alex, do you want to, do you want to jump in and see if, because I it's my understanding inclusionary zoning is is applies for the entire community. Have you seen an instance where where there's been carve outs at all?
Yeah, a recent study by Harvard University last recorded that about 140 cities and towns in Massachusetts have inclusionary zoning. And they're first to townwide inclusionary zoning policies. It's really a best practice for cities and towns, and it's something that we saw a lot in the 1970s, but a lot of the most recent inclusionary zoning policies have been adopted in the last 20 years in response to rising housing costs. I think one of the major benefits of a townwide policy as opposed to having requirements within a district like Ashland has now is that you can create affordable opportunities throughout the community, which allows people who are going to have those opportunities to have the same opportunities as those living in the market rate units. So it's a more equitable system. It also makes sure that as development occurs in the town, the town is receiving community benefits from that development. We know from the housing production planning process that development activity has been pretty has really been rising in Ashland. So the idea here is to to capture that and and produce community benefits through the policy. And also just want to state that, you know, this housing production plan and inclusionary zoning process is part of really one process. Initially, we were going to do each of those things at the same time, but then the town's preference was to adopt the housing production plan first so that the town could receive safe harbor from proposed 40B development. And so then at that time, we prioritize the adoption of that plan and then move towards inclusionary zoning. But really, the processes are are within the same planning process.
Thank you, Alex. Anna, I see you. Have your hand raised?
Sure. If I if I could, and maybe this is a clarifying question for Alex. Alex, my understanding is that inclusionary housing, although the kind of standard approach is townwide, communities certainly within the town-wide model can assure further equity through very strategic thinking. So for example, and I would love if I could to share to share a screen. Emma, could you share my screen or how do I do that? Can I just press share screen? I wanted to show. Thank you. I wanted to show kind of a very quick example of that, which is Burlington, Vermont, which is quite progressive when it comes to its thinking about equity. And what Burlington has is exactly what what Alex mentioned. It's a townwide inclusionary zoning bylaw, just like ours. But what it does is it thinks about equity from the position that the parts of town that are essentially wealthier, that have a lesser need, if you will, for, or how do I phrase it? The 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 simplest way to phrase it is that towns that are less inclusive to begin with, parts of town that have less than 50% of residents or below 80% AMI in fact, cannot have payment in lieu or off-site options. So the concept of inclusionary zoning that is townwide certainly is the standard. But the most progressive models also recognize that equity is about assuring affordability where we most need it and not having off-site or cash options in the wealthiest parts of our community. So that we don't end up with a problem of, well, I don't want affordable housing in my backyard. So I I kind of wanted to show that model really quickly if I could share the screen because it is really helpful to have that visual. So I don't know if folks can see that. I'm trying to do it now. So you can see the inclusionary zoning map, if you will, for Burlington. They've identified sections of town that are considered less inclusive, where less than 50% of residents are below 80% AMI. And for those particular sections, there is no payment in lieu, and there is no off-site option. So what that does is it allows for affordability to occur where we need it most in parts of our community that that truly lack it. And it it prevents, if you will, this kind of sections of town that are only for poor people. So I I sort of want to hear, Alex, is that consistent with how it's it's been done in Massachusetts as well, or is this just Burlington that looks to equity in such aggressive way?
Thanks for sharing, Anna. Yeah, we did get a chance to to take a look at that when you received some of the questions you sent over and I think Alexis and I would agree that it's a very interesting way to structure the policy. I think it does ask a lot from developers and it may have to do with the larger population size in Burlington or how they went about structuring their policy. But I'll say that Alexis, you can comment more on this, but we really wanted to make sure that the policy was based on financial feasibility because the worst thing that could happen is a policy not make sense financially for a developer, then we don't get any new housing at all. We don't get any affordable housing. So that's why it's important that we base the model based on data in Ashland. Having conversations with developers in Ashland and collecting data as a part of our financial model. And I'm just going to maybe turn it over to Alexis to just talk a little bit more about that model and how it was developed.
Yeah, so part of what informed, you know, the the town's decisions about what what, you know, in addition to public input and and the assessment of need that was done as part of the HPP was a financial analysis using what's called a pro forma. It's essentially a tool that developers use when they're going to figure out, okay, does a project make sense financially or not? It takes all of this, all these inputs, like, you know, what they think they can get for rent, what it costs for land. You know, how much it costs for, you know, to do maintenance on the building and it kind of, and it and it tells, you know, it says, okay, yeah, this is, this project is probably going to work or or this project is not going to work. You're not a good idea to go after this. And so what we did was we took a whole bunch of different inclusionary options. You know, at 60% AMI, at 80% AMI, at 15%, at 10%, all these, all, you know, of the of the units and said, all right, well, what's what's going to work in a, you know, in a way that won't just totally be be make the development infeasible? Because if, you know, if no, if no, if no housing gets built at all, then you get no inclusionary units. And so that's that's what's informing a lot of a lot of our analysis, just in terms of feasibility. To answer your question, Anna or Anna, the I am not aware of any city or town in Massachusetts that tiers their requirement based on different, different areas, except for Boston, which kind of is its own thing because it's not subject to the state zoning zoning laws. That's not to say it doesn't exist, but I'm not aware of any. It it's, I do know towns that tier their requirements based on project size, which is actually, which is part of part of what's included in this draft for Ashland right now, either the the number of units required gets larger as the project gets larger, or perhaps deeper affordability is required as the project gets large.
Yes, I'll be making those that are invited to speak co-hosts to allow you to unmute or I'll be inviting you to unmute. So Brandy, I'll rely on you to kind of direct who should be speaking next. I have allowed Alexis to unmute herself if she wants to.
Sorry to interrupt, but Emma, would you mind making me co-host?
Sorry, I thought I did. One sec. Oh, no, you are, you are a co-host.
And Brandy, with your permission, I just had a follow-up question for Alexis, the time is right.
Sure. Is it a quick question? Because I know that there are some folks that that haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Just a, just a quick question. Alexis, you mentioned some discussions with developers that are interested interested in Ashland as far as the inclusionary zoning. And, and sort of a separate question obviously is, what is the first thing we're gonna do out of the gate, right? Like uh Brandy mentioned, it's important to figure out as far as priorities per housing production plan, what method or what tool are we gonna pull out of our toolkit, so to speak, to address affordability first? So before we sort of dig deeper with inclusionary zoning by law itself, I'm curious to explore one option, just to kind of see if there's been work done by MAPC on this or by the town perhaps. So it might be Emma's question as well, which is um, there are developers specialized specifically in affordable housing. Um, one local developer in Boston is Boston Capital. I'm sure you're familiar with their work. Um, and this is a developer that essentially comes into communities and works with towns to truly focus on affordable housing as a specialty of development. Some of that is workforce housing, some of it is mixed use or a market rate housing in combination with affordability. But there are developers whose specialty is affordable housing. And I'm curious if there's been contact with those developers, either by the town or by MAPC to explore their interest in Ashland as a solution to our affordability issue or, or crisis.
I can't speak to what, whether the town has spoken to folks, although uh uh some folks earlier on the call mentioned he did that they'd spoken with Habitat for Humanity, who certainly falls into that, you know, mission-based developer um category. Um, I will say that in gen- a, a couple of things come to mind. Um, in general, um those, those uh organizations do what they do with a lot of funding from the state and the federal government. Um, it takes about three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand bucks per affordable unit in subsidy to, to build an affordable unit. And the state gives out, the state typically funds, don't quote me on this number, but somewhere in the range of like twenty to thirty projects a year for the entire state. So there's, so it's absolutely possible, and I a hundred percent encourage the town to do it, but it's um, but it's a, it's a long wait. Um, the, the developer, the affordable housing developer would also need um access to land. Many, you know, many of them will go where land is available and where they can find land for an affordable price. Um, and you know, that gets back to some of the other strategies that folks had mentioned about perhaps using, you know, town-owned land. Um, I, you know, I, I, and, and the third thing I'll say that does relate to the zoning is, you know, it, it's if an affordable housing developer has to seek lots of variances and, you know, if it's just difficult to build what they can do i- in terms that's financially feasible, then that's, you know, a less attractive place for them to spend their limited resources, um which doesn't have to exactly do with inclusionary zoning in general. Uh, or inclusionary zoning specifically, but that's more zoning in general. Um, but I will say I absolutely encourage the town to um to, to have those conversations or for, for, you know, committee members to have those conversations.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I, I think that's, that would be wonderful so that we have context. If, if our decision is gonna be to start with inclusionary housing, we should explore those options more fully before we make that decision.
I, I should say, it takes, so I, I've previously, I've worked for several uh nonprofit developers, um and I, I can say from experience, it takes from conception to like the time that people are moving in, it takes like five years to build an affordable housing project. It takes a very long time. Um, and so I would, I would perhaps, I mean, I, I appreciate, you know, folks wanna get all, you know, fully understand that, that, the, the, the policy, but I would, I would perhaps recommend not waiting to enact a policy until an affordable house, until an affordable housing development opportunity comes along, because again, the state only funds twenty or thirty of those every year. Those opportunities um are few and far between. Most, most projects, like the ones you cited, have to wait two or three years in line just to get their funding. Um, so typically what MAPC recommends is, you know, I, I, I say this a lot. There is no such thing as a silver bullet, um, you know. Seeking development from mission-based developer, affordable housing development from mission-based developers is a great strategy, but it's, you know, but, but it's uh, but you know, but that on its own isn't gonna move the needle. Inclusionary zoning is a fantastic strategy, but there are things that inclusionary zoning can and can't do. Um, so we recommend kind of a multi-pronged approach to really tackle the, the, the need more broadly.
Thanks, Alexis. Um, Yolanda, I know you've had your hand up. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you to those of you who worked on this inclusionary zoning and, and the housing production plan. It's, it's a big process. And uh, just a couple of things, and then I, I wanna make it short. I wanna make sure other elected make it short because you said we want to stay till nine o'clock and I wanna make sure we get it to some of the citizens. First, the more, the more tools we can have in our toolbox in regards to inclusionary zoning and the ADU and looking at that, I think it's important. And as with many things, a number of us on this screen have been talking about the importance of affordable for many, many years. And now reminding the public and getting the public engaged is gonna allow us to do that. So I would say out of this meeting, we need to have another meeting regarding inclusionary zoning, even though we're pushing it until November. Let's not wait until October to have another meeting. Let's do it in the summer. Let's have a couple of, of conversations so that maybe we can do it in person, so that there's more conversation and people understand it. And I think we just need to keep encouraging people that in affordable, one, by law, we have to have it. And two, if we wanna have a better mix of people in our community, we need to have a range of affordable. And that's all. I, other things, but not important for tonight.
Thanks, Yolanda. Uh, Tricia?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one really quick comment, um, just because I wasn't sure it was fully understood that um the inclusionary zoning by law, as we've considered it, and obviously it can change, um, doesn't in any way change the underlying zoning of an area. So it doesn't mean that all of a sudden now you can put multifamily housing where you couldn't before or single family where you couldn't before. The underlying zoning stays in place. So that was, I just wasn't sure that was understood and I wanted to make sure it was clear.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Uh, Steve? Steve Mitchell, you're, you're.
I'm on you muted now. Thanks, Brandy. So, so this is, I think, a question maybe for MAPC. Um, you know, uh, Ashland is facing another zoning requirement and, and by virtue of being an MBTA uh community, we are going to be required to zone specific areas relative to the requirements of, of being an MBTA community. So how does this all overlap? Now, as far as I'm aware, there's no affordable component to, to that particular requirement. So you know, your, your thoughts on how that does overlap having that new requirement, which is a substantial amount of of new units relative to our, our location on the commuter rail.
I can jump in and I, I know I see Alex uh has his hand raised as well. Um, so I'll, 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 I'll kick it off. Um, you're, you're correct. Uh, the new requirement for MBT communities does not include an affordability component. Um, I will say if the, you know, if whatever the town, however the town chooses to move forward with the um, the MBT, with the, the MBTA requirement. Um, if there is an inclusionary zoning in place, then that, that just ensures that anything new that, that is built is providing, um, you know, is, is keeping up with that, that ten percent and continuing to move the town towards reaching that ten percent. Um, and that, that, that any new housing built underneath, under that will include some of this desperately needed affordable housing. Um, Alex, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to, to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would just second that. Um, if this is something that um, you know, pretty much every community in greater Boston is gonna be subject to, and if you're going to be zoning to create more multifamily housing, uh, inclusionary zoning would be essential to making sure that at least a portion of it would be affordable. And I would also um point to the housing production plan and the initial analysis that's, that looks at development opportunities and constraints. Um, because I think that would be a great tool for thinking about um where you may pursue compliance with the three A zoning. Um, and it, I think it's also a good tool um to look at um potential sites that you may want to incentivize development on or work with a um mission-based developer on.
And just for, I should have started out with this. For folks who aren't uh familiar, the state passed legislation that um requires towns um with or near um a transit station or commuter rail stop to have a portion of land near that transit stop um zoned for, for multifamily. Um, and this, to, to echo someone previously, um, you know, this, it, it would not require multifamily throughout town. Um, this is, you know, with the, the inclusionary that we're, inclusionary zoning that we're talking about tonight. Um, it would, you know, would, 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 uh, would not change the underlining, underlying zoning. This is not proposing, you know, multifamily housing uh in, you know, in areas where it isn't already allowed.
Thanks, Alexis and Alex. Um, Rob, you have another question?
Yeah, sure. Just a quick point. Um, actually, it doesn't change the underlying zoning, but it does get rid of our existing uh overlay districts, and that's something we need to keep in mind. There's certain things required in that, those overlay districts, which we may like and which would not be in this. So as we move forward in this plan, we should keep that in mind and how will this affect, you know, what we have in those overlay districts. So it does make some changes to some of the current rules, so.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. Um, I just want to do a quick time check. We have seventeen minutes left before nine o'clock. And I know you have your hand raised. I wanted to see before um, before we go to Anna, if there's anyone else from any of the boards or the housing production plan working group, if, if anyone else also has any final thoughts before we open it up to the public. So, um, Anna, go ahead.
It's fine. I, I think we have less than fifteen minutes and I will allow the public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so we will go ahead.
I just want to note that so, some of the, the folks who were disrupting the meeting earlier are still in this meeting, so I, I'm not sure how you want it.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I was muted there. Um, so Anna, Emma, you'll be, I'm sure you'll be on the lookout for anyone that shouldn't be here tonight. Um, so I'm gonna open it up to the public. We have fifteen minutes left um in our meeting tonight. I would ask that everyone um, please keep it brief to two minutes, please, and um to allow us to be able to uh, to hear from everyone that has, has questions or comments. Um, Mark, Sony, you've had your hand up um during the meeting. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Appreciate it. And in two minutes, I'm gonna try to go through what I have. Because all my questions come from the slides I was, that you put up. First of all, would a form-based post be lasting through the process of completions of any development? That's one. The Simpson property on Auto Street, how much time and funds will be there once it gets going? The company has a plan in twenty fifteen. What happens, what, what happens sits? Uh, the area, the area median income for individual households, how about a single retire or social security funded person? And on the twenty fifteen household types, fifty-eight percent? Is twenty fifteen that was? It's, what is it now? Those are my questions and they can be answered. Thank you.
So Mark, we'll, we'll kind of take a couple of them. Um, as far as the, the Simpson property, we have to explore what that would look like to be able to utilize that town property. So that's something that we will have to, to, to do going forward. Um, the AMI, the percentage that you had referenced is, is um not specific to any group. So it is, it is um the area median income for, for um basically for the county. So it doesn't, it doesn't break it down by, by um, by retiree and, and, and that type. Um, I know you had a couple of other questions. Why don't, what, what we'll do is, is Mark, we'll make sure that we get back to you because I know we have some other folks with their hands raised. Um, and we wanna make sure we get everyone's comments and we'll, we'll get back to you with some of the other answers to, to your questions. Okay? Okay. Um, so uh, Julie Nardone, I know you've had your hand up too. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Julie Nardone, eighty-six Elliot Street. I think one of the biggest impediments to reaching the ten percent is the state's own definition of affordable housing, that it has to be new. I mean, uh, this law came into effect in nineteen sixty-nine. We've had over fifty years. And we've been building stuff, but um some of the stuff we've been building just wasn't labeled affordable. If you look at Chiswick Street, Oak Street and some other places, we got all over town. The rent is affordable. Honestly, it's not more than I paid in nineteen ninety-three for my apartment. And related to that, I really don't think with a town that's as built out as this and a state that's as built out, Massachusetts is the third densest state in the country. And Ashland is one of the densest um towns in the actual west. I don't think you can build your way. I think you have to convert your way out of it. And I think we've got this, you know, it's gotta be new mindset. Um, one thing that we had asked the affordable housing to do was buy houses in two thousand eight. And they didn't. And, you know, it was when the market crashed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, John Featherstone? Nope, you're muted.
Let's go.
There you go.
Brandy, I want to congratulate you on a well-run meeting. I thought it was good. Uh, I want to thank Steve Greenberg for his leadership over the last more than decade on the Affordable Housing Committee, but with that being said, the Simpson property action needs to be taken on that. It's been way too long for the town to be sitting on it and not have a plan. As the Affordable Housing Commissioner at this meeting, I will tell you that not a day go, well, not a week goes by that I don't get a call that somebody wants to be placed on a five-year waiting list to get into affordable housing. So I know we weren't talking about low-income housing, but the trust is a low-income housing mission. So don't ever lose sight of that. Uh, you know, as a former selectman and with my MAPC hat on, I have a lot of different things on that. But as this community ages, it's also gonna be hard for people to afford livability and age, age into this community. So you can't look at all that and, like I said, great meeting, great dialogue. I, I agree with Yolanda. You have to have more meetings. But government serves people. It doesn't serve numbers. And that ten percent is, is a requirement, and I understand the requirement. But people are more important than that ten percent, and I hope that nobody loses sight of that. Thank you.
Absolutely, John. Thank you. Um, Helen Nicole? Helen, can you unmute yourself? Or maybe Emma can unmute you. Maybe. There you go.
I unmuted?
You're good.
Okay, good. So I, I have one quick question. So you were talking about um, one of the advantages of um uh, of the uh, the inclusionary housing that, that there's no public subsidy, that it's, you know, the developer pays. But then you also talk about using town land. And what I want to know is, because to me that seems like a subsidy. And what I want to know is, who gets to decide which town land they get to use? Do the, do, do the residents get to decide that or does some board get to decide that? How is that decided?
I can um answer that. So um, the use of public land would be a subsidy, but that's a separate recommendation in the housing production plan aside from inclusionary zoning. So um, the bylaw that's being discussed tonight um wouldn't involve that. Um, but if the town wanted to pursue that other recommendation, the housing production plan, typically you would go through a public process to decide um what would, what would occur on that site. Um, but if the town's committed to producing affordable housing, one of the biggest pieces of leverage that has is that land, because then you could issue a request to a developer to really ask for something very specific that you would like there. Um, but typically, that would also involve public processes. Um, the community would likely be able to weigh in on what would happen.
Michael, I know you probably, you, you have something to, to add to that?
Yeah, generally the disposition of town property um would require a town meeting vote.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex and Michael. Um, I see Steve has his hand up. Steve, can you please um give your full name? Because we can't see your, see who you are on, on Zoom, please? Ah, okay. Go unmute yourself.
Sure. Steve Morgan, one thirty-six Concord Street. So I'll be brief. Um, a couple of comments on the presentation. Um, I think the idea of using parking subsidies, um, you know, parking is a requirement. That doesn't make a lot of sense. Regarding payments to the trust, this town Regarding payments to the trust, this town has a long history, you know, of trying to do affordable housing, the same leadership in the trust. Been ineffective. A lot of projects have not been successful. I think that giving more money to the trust is the wrong approach, especially through fees like this. So I would strongly recommend against that and recommend rethinking the approach with the Affordable Housing Trust, which is primarily working off of the C P A. So those are my comments. I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Catherine's iPad, can you also state your full name too? Can you unmute? You're, you're still muted. Emma, can you unmute?
I think it's unmuted now. Okay. Catherine Jersey, eleven Rodman Road. Thank you for gathering all these boards and I think, I think this is a great start. I just, I have a couple of comments. I, one overview is that I think we have to really think about marrying Yolanda's comments and, and Marcelo's comments. So we do need more attention. We need the public. But this is critical within the comprehensive plan. But I realize that the affordability and, and keeping going toward the ten percent. And I, I'm with, I forget who said like, I don't accept ten percent. John Featherstone, ten percent should be the floor. We can, we can do better in Ashland. So how do we carefully not overdo something if we're thinking fall town meeting, knowing a comprehensive plan isn't going to be done by then? I also think, you know, I haven't really heard, like, we have friendly forty Bs and I, I'd like to see how that could be a piece of this. Like go out, pound the pavement, talk about it, right? Instead of just changing our zoning without the comprehensive plan. Not against changing zoning, obviously. I, I think it's interesting that we, we say it's the whole town, but I believe the financial analysis is done around multifamily and that's only certain spots in town. So again, it's an equity thing. We, that has to be factored and discussed, please, when we talk about this. And lastly, I think to keep this going forward, kind of marrying those Yolanda, Marcelo, like while we're getting comprehensive plan, I think we need a just general housing summit because there's just so much pressure. There's M B T A, we hear this whole state wants housing, housing, housing. We want affordable housing in Ashland. We may or may not want more housing. We do want affordable. So I think it has to be in that context too, to get the best for Ashland. Thank you.
I just want to respond quickly to a couple of things. One, in terms of friendly forty Bs, the, the technical term for that would be called the local initiative process where you can choose to use the forty B comprehensive permitting process by choice. And that is one of the priority recommendations in the housing production plan. Also, the inclusionary zoning bylaw would apply across the entire town of Ashland. But there is a slightly different requirement for multifamily projects, which would be at the half sixty percent A M I, half eighty percent A M I. And then single family projects, which at the eighty percent A M I. And that is because of the financial difficulties that may be involved with single family development specifically. And it's based on input that we received from developers who specifically talked about the challenges of having to provide single family homes on site.
And Kate, just to, just to address the, the question that you had about friendly forty Bs, the project that is happening, the U G C project, senior hundred and eighty senior housing off of Memorial Drive, that is a friendly forty B. And that, that went through the same process that Alex talked about, the, the, the lip. So we have, we have kind of pursued, pursued that where we, where we can. So absolutely, it's definitely on the table. Thank you. And the last comment, Joan Gondfrody? Can you? Unmute? There you go.
All right. Thank you. First, this was great. Thank you so much. I did miss a little bit of it. So if I make any comments that are outside of that, I apologize. But I'm, I'm going to be brief. I sent an email to the boards and I'd appreciate it if you take those comments under consideration. One thing that I am very concerned about and I don't, I didn't hear it tonight. Again, if I did, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but it's how do we ensure that the, the affordable goes to Ashland residents and employees first? I think that's really key in keeping any kind of project in, in, in the, in the culture of Ashland, I guess would be the best way that I can say it. I think that, you know, I, I've seen so much in Framingham and, and surrounding areas that have created issues when they have to go to Boston and to, they get into situations where they, where things get very difficult. I am, I am against so many of the incentives. I think that's a, that's a big concern. One of the things that I'd really appreciate you concentrating on is the mathematics of this. To me, when you, when you require X amount, whatever percentage you decide on you of affordable, and then you allow them to add back in the same amount of, of regular housing, you're negating that affordable. And you never got there. I, I, that just makes no logical sense to me as far as the mathematics goes. And the, the same thing with allowing people to pay to not, to not put it in or allowing them to put it into another, another project, as we've seen in the past, those projects just never happen. Or we get stuck holding it if, you know, holding it if they don't bond it, et cetera. So those things are extremely important, I think, without getting us into another mess like we've been in the past. History does repeat itself. And that's basically on my, my priority is keeping Ashland as much the family beautiful town that it is. And I hope that we can come to some kind of compromise on this to allow, to get affordable because we do need it, no question. But without allowing the huge projects that are coming in. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. So we are at nine o'clock. And, you know, I want to thank everyone for, for being a part of this meeting tonight. I think it's, I think it's super helpful when boards can get together and talk about sort of big issue things like affordable housing. I know that we had said in the very beginning that we are planning to take the inclusionary zoning off the table for the Maytown meeting. And it sounds like we definitely need to have more meetings, whether it's another multi-board meeting like this or a public forum to, to make sure that, that we continue to talk about this and continue the, the conversation and help the public understand what, what this is. Also, I'm, I'm also very big on next steps. So we will, we will follow up and also potentially look at the, the A D U bylaw. That does sound like it's something that we, we want to pursue and work with the Affordable Housing Trust on, on potentially utilizing a, you know, town properties as well. So if there is, if there isn't anything else from, from anyone here, I will ask the, the, the boards to, to adjourn for the night.
Motion for the select board to adjourn.
Second.
Greaves eye.
Your eye.
Kinsman eye. I see Steve with his hand up.
And Joe.
Okay. Planning board?
I will make a motion for the planning board to adjourn.
I'll second them.
We'll start with Deepa.
Sorry, could, if, as you're voting, could you raise your hand and I'll just unmute you if you're not a co-host?
My apologies. I forgot.
Marcelo eye.
Anna Tesman, it's the eye.
And Tricia Kendall, eye.
Thanks. Steve Greenberg, the Affordable Housing Trust?
Motion for the Affordable Trust to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Second.
Alan?
Aye.
Bernadette? Any other members? Okay, that's a quorum. We're adjourned. Thank you.
And the Z B A, John?
I make a motion, the Z B A adjourn. Anton, can you second that?
Second. Can you not hear me?
There you go.
That's a quorum. I think John left, so.
Yeah, I don't think John's on anymore.
We're out. Thank you. Bye.
That's good. I just want to say thank you to, to Alex and Alexis from M A P C for being a part of this conversation tonight. This will be something that we continue to, to talk about. And, and thank you all for, for your time tonight and for all the public that gave comment. And we look forward to the next conversation on this. So with that, I will close the meeting at nine oh four. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brandy. Great job, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Brandy. Bye.
Thanks.